All right, I will call this meeting to order. March seventh, twenty twenty-three, the City Council meeting, and we'll stand for the. Ready to begin. All right, I'd like to do a special welcome to our Riverside High School. Students for attending our City Council meeting, welcome. We will do our. Roll call for absences, we only have, well, Junior is excused, he did notify that, but. Brenda, Brenda, she's absent, yeah, she may come, may not, so, but we do have a forum. So we'll do approval of minutes, February seventh, twenty twenty-three, our regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve, uh, regular minutes from February's.
Okay, you got a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, we got a dual second. Uh, is there any discussion anybody like you have over these? All in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? We will go right to our pre-arranged presentation with Mr. Stephen Fuss. Rental complex cost and rent control.
Good evening, City Council, folks in the audience, folks online, uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Stephen Fuss. I've lived in Boardman for two and a half years, I use they the pronouns, I'm a music teacher at San Boardman Elementary School. Um, tonight's, uh, rental complex report is done more as a long-form citizen comment because I did not think three minutes was enough time to go over everything that the Boardman and Principal, uh, the Boardman rental crisis has to encompass. Um, so to start off, there are two big issues with the rents in Boardman, one is availability, two is the cost, if you turn to page three of that packet that I provided, you'll see a list of the rental complexes in Boardman, um, this just focuses on rental complexes, so no uh, housing units for rent and not houses for sale either. Uh, in that list, you'll see that there are ten rental complexes, and of the ten, there are only two that have availability currently in Boardman, that is Castle Rock Apartments and Portview Apartments. Castle Rock Apartments is a low-income housing, uh, rental unit, which their rent is determined by family size and family income. Uh, and so they do not qualify for the current Senate Bill six oh eight, which is the current statewide rent protections, um, which says that landlords cannot raise the rent seven percent plus or more than seven percent plus, uh, consumer price index, which is also known as annual inflation, with two caveats, the first is that they cannot receive federal money for low-income or rent assistance programs, which a lot of our, uh, complexes do, and B, that they cannot be within the first fifteen years of their first tenant moving in. Um, Portview Apartments does not qualify because it is younger than fifteen years of age, so we will not see them fall under the Senate code until the late twenty thirties. Um, it's also important to note that the new apartments down by the river, while yes, it does solve the availability crisis, allows the affinity property management company, which will be the owners of that property, um, a super monopoly on the rent in Boardman, because they also own Portview Apartments, which for middle-income and high-income earners is one of the only places that we are allowed to rent in Boardman, because we do not qualify for those low-income, uh, rental properties. Now, if you look at the page four, both, uh, both charts, the first chart is our median income fair market rent and median rent for Boardman. Um, according to the US Census data for Boardman, uh, in twenty twenty, the median average income for Boardman, for, so this is for the individual, was thirty-one thousand dollars, and for the household, so everybody in a unit making money, was fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. According to apartments dot com, that household income and, uh, median average is now sixty thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. Fair market rent in Boardman, according to rentinfo.org, um, and you'll find all of the resources that I used, which was just Google, um, all of those links are provided in that packet as well. For twenty twenty-three, the current fair market rent for a one-bedroom, which is the type of unit that I rent, is seven hundred and sixteen dollars, while for a two-bedroom, the most, uh, available type of unit throughout all of the complexes in Boardman, is nine hundred and forty-three dollars. If you look back at that page three chart, the current going price for a one-bedroom at Portview Apartments is one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars as a starting price, going all the way up, according to their website, to one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is almost six hundred dollars difference between what fair market says, which it's not a fair market because affinity property management company has the monopoly on our rental spaces. Um, and then median rent, if you go back to the page four, seven hundred eighty-four dollars, so still six hundred dollars above that median average rent for Boardman. Two-bedroom, they start at one thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and go all the way up to one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Comparing that to the median rent and fair market rent, fair market rent for a two-bedroom in Moore County is nine hundred and forty-three dollars, while the median rent is one thousand three hundred, or sorry, one thousand thirty-two dollars. So again, they are charging over six hundred dollars more than what fair market says and what the median rent for Boardman is. According to, uh, Portland City Code, chapter thirty, point zero one, point zero three, zero, point P. Uh, if we were to add an, a definition of affordable housing to our city code, like I would like, um, and what this presentation aims to convince you guys to do. Um, that code says that affordable housing targets renters spending no more than thirty percent of their income, their gross household income on rent and utilities, again with two caveats, the first caveat is that utilities cannot be paid to a third-party company, Portview Apartments uh, outsources internet and electricity to a third-party company, and B, that they cannot, um, be based on usage, which the other four utilities that Portview, uh, renters pay, water, gas, sewage, and garbage are all based on usage. So, all of these prices in here, advertised prices, are just for the physical box that people are living with, with, um, you, with appliances that are not usable because it does not include utilities. Which is kind of ridiculous, honestly, yes, they're nice apartments, but why are we paying that much for just the physical space that we are living in? If you go to page five, you can see that the, uh, the Portview annual rent versus the median average income for Boardman, the, taking that thirteen twenty number, uh, for the one-bedroom, multiplying it by twelve, you get fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for the year for a twelve-month lease, which is also the type of lease that I have. That is fifty-one percent of that thirty-one thousand dollar individual's income, if we assume that that average number has not increased, but based on the average income per household, we can assume that it's increased because the household average has increased. That fifteen thousand dollar number is twenty-six percent of the sixty thousand nine hundred and eleven, uh, dollar average income for a household, and this is for a one-bedroom, it's taking up a quarter for just the physical box that they live in. For a two-bedroom, taking that larger number, the one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollar number, multiplying it by twelve, you get twenty thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the year, if they sign a twelve-year lease. This is sixty-six percent of that thirty thousand dollar income for the individual, and thirty-three percent of the household income, so by Portland's definition, if we were to pick up Portview Apartments, block it in Portland, they would not be affordable, and by Portview Apartments have not been affordable for the individual since twenty twenty, when I was paying nine hundred fifty dollars for that one-bedroom apartment that I currently am still in, that told yearly total comes out to eleven thousand forty, or sorry, eleven thousand four hundred dollars, which is thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of that individual income. Now, for the household, that's only about nineteen percent of that fifty thousand dollar number that I rented, but still, that's a large chunk that is just going to the physical room, so if you imagine that this room was completely empty, no chairs, no electronics, the lights didn't work, it was just a blank, empty room. That is what we were paying for with these thousands of dollars. Which is personally ridiculous. Um, to add extra, uh, personal, uh, ethos to this, if my rent goes up again, I will probably have to move home to Texas, and you will lose a music educator who is skilled, who the children like. You'll also lose high schoolers, because they won't have any place to move out of their parents' house to go to if they decide to stay in Boardman. So this is about not just my future, but our students' future. Um, going back to that page four chart, the Portview rent over time, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, my rent went up fifteen percent. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, it went up twenty-one percent, so based on this pattern, I can expect my rent to go twenty-five percent this year. Which I didn't do the math because I was already in too deep with all the math I was doing anyway, um, but that's still, that's a large chunk. That's like hundreds of dollars, which will set Portview for a one-bedroom into probably the fifteen hundred dollar range. Comparing that to current prices in Portland, a one-bedroom of equal size, equal amenities, the washer dryer in unit, about eight hundred, seven hundred to eight hundred square feet, those apartments down by the water in Portland, so downtown Portland, are going for sixteen thousand, or sixteen hundred dollars. Why are we paying Portland prices when we're not in Portland? We're two and a half hours east, in a town that is way smaller. It also kind of bamboozles me, because the council, and I did want to use the word bamboozle in this presentation, because it's a fun word, um. It bamboozles me that a previous iteration of this city council has handed affinity property management company a super monopoly on our renting, um, market. Now, what can we do about it? Well, we could add a definition of affordable housing into the city code, much like Portland does. We could add a rent increase cap, like the state already has, and many cities in California, um, including Oakland, which is on page six of your packet, you'll see a list of cities and states that are already pursuing these, uh, rent increases or rent control. Oakland says that, um, they cannot raise rent more than seven percent plus that consumer price index, for reference, twenty twenty-two's number was nine point nine percent. Um, but they can't do that unless they provide a petition to the city for that increase, if it's going to exceed that nine point nine percent, if Oakland were in, uh, Oregon. You can also see that New Jersey, uh, Cali, more cities in California, Minnesota, Florida, and Colorado are already looking at statewide protections, Montclair and Boston, so Montclair, New Jersey, and Boston, Massachusetts, are also looking at citywide rent increases. Or city-wide rent controls. Uh, so, I would call on the city council to add an affordable housing definition to the city code, a rent increase cap into the city code, and potentially a rent freeze into a second property management company, or a second property within those list of ten properties has equal or more availability than they currently do. Because this is not just about me, this is about the city and the future of our city, which you guys, many of you, put ram to grow our city. But you guys have stunted that growth because of the super monopoly that this, uh, property management company, um, has, or is going to have once these new apartments are built. Do you guys have any questions?
Do they have any questions or comments?
Um, just one question that I have, in the research that you, um, that you did, besides the control of rent, um, did you see any towns that had any sort of, um, um, perhaps not like rent control, but more so, um, sort of benefits, um, that are geared towards?
Better geared toward?
Towards educators.
Towards educators? No, because I was not specifically looking for that, um, I was looking more at this as a person who is looking to move to Boardman, and what they would be saying is, as they're looking to move to rent. Um, because our housing prices are sitting at three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars currently, just based on what I've been able to see, granted, I have reached out to Leslie Pearson and Anna Brown to look at the real estate side of this, as well as the business development side of this. Um, so potentially, we will return and present more information to the council. Um, I do know, based on Facebook advertisements, that Oregon, I believe, has some sort of educator assistance programs to get them to buy houses, not to rent.
And that was part of the reason I was asking, I'm just curious, because I, um, I know even just our neighboring town, um, until it sounds like they have something where they get, um, a little bit of a tax rate, um, because they want, first of all, there's a little bit of a crisis on the education side, um, but for our smaller towns, it's a little bit harder, um, to retain employees.
Right, yeah.
And so, but I think most of what I've seen has been, um, towards purchasing.
Yep.
Um, a home versus.
So I believe there is a five thousand dollars sort of credit that you can get by buying a house, that would be a question for Leslie.
There, there is for, for purchasing, right, a home in Boardman.
Yeah, um, I did see that, eh, New York and Los Angeles started these rent controls in the nineteen seventies as a way to stabilize rent. So, a lot of their city codes, uh, city code chapter fifteen, entitled, New York City Code, or titled chapter twenty-six, sorry, titled twenty-six, chapter three, um, and the reason I didn't include those in the examples that I provided to you in the emailed version of this packet, um. The reason I didn't put those in is because they are so outdated from the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, and I was looking at the more recent, uh, developments in the rental control and rental protections.
I guess my question is, is how, as a body does, do we interfere with, uh, price and demand inflation, telling businesses what they can and can't do, that's the part that I struggle with on, if, if, if a local body starts telling businesses what they can and can't do, what they can charge and can't charge, what are the ramifications that would occur on the other side of that?
Okay.
Um, that's the part that I struggle with, I mean, as far as government control, seems like government gets involved in everything, and it never stops. So, I mean, if I was, if we got involved, next thing I know, I was talking about this with the principals, like, so the city of Boardman could say, teachers are making too much money, we're not going to pay you more than sixty-five thousand dollars, I mean, that's, that's never happened, but that would be like.
Does the city have the authority to do that?
The city, city authority would be what?
To say that teachers could not make that?
No, I'm saying citizens, that would be like the citizens tell the school board, hey, we're, you, I mean, we don't give you permission to pay more than a certain amount of money. Do we really want to start going that route, and?
I mean.
I don't, I don't know what my answer is.
Based on this data, um, and the historic, history of monopolies in our country, monopolies tend to be bad, because that means that there's one entity controlling all of the supply and demand. This government control that you're concerned about would help spread out the resources, it would bring more companies into Boardman, so more rental companies in the Boardman beyond the at least three that I could find, Umatilla Housing, or Umatilla County Housing Initiative, Affinity Management Property Company, and, um, Veridian Management, which runs a couple of our, uh, apartment complexes as well, so it's not so much about government control, it's more about diversifying the market, and saying, and allowing more people to come in, because there's more options. It's, yeah, so, yes, there might be detriments way down the line, and of course, the city could amend those codes, um, however likely that process is, but for right now, based on this current data, we are in crisis. And I, as a citizen, I'm reaching out to the city to ask for help.
Mr. Mayor, I feel the same way of that statement as well, um, thinking about what it would sound like for us to kind of have that influence on topics. The other side is, we're also here to defend our citizens, and I guess my question, past what yours originally was, is what would it take for the city to approach, approach this conversation, would we have to investigate, um, and kind of come up with numbers, you know, statistics, like historically, I mean, I know that we, we have stuff in front of us, is it something that after the cost of living comes in, this is something we could bring back up and see where current numbers stand, because this is something that we, I'm sure we all hear about, you know, the housing market, and as now, we're also hearing the renting market as well, and it is an uncomfortable feeling to think that I was a part of the yeses that approved that waterfront before I knew the kind of company that might be there. Is there a plan that we could put in place to, to work into this more?
Well, we haven't even heard from, uh, from the rent, uh, the person who owns.
Well, I, I.
I mean, we didn't hear anybody from that side, I mean, we're, we're hearing the consumer side.
Well, that's why I had.
Owner side of, I mean, I don't want to, I think we don't want to get into the weeds on this, but.
If you want to talk to the owners, affinity property management company is based in Portland, they have, they have properties all across California, Oregon, and Washington, and two in San Antonio, Texas.
I'm just saying, I, I just, I mean, I, I mean, I don't like the prices of gas, and I'm going to interject into the price of gas, I mean, that's the part that I, I don't, I have, I don't like some things that I, that are around here, but I mean, I can't, I, how far do we go, I mean, as far as uh, interjecting and being into it, the state is trying to meddle into it, and we see what the state's coming up with, and that's just shows how hard it really is to try to control.
True, but we can also potentially turn to California, because most of their cities already have these sorts of protections in place. I've listed one, two, three, or at least four.
Well, that's California.
Right, however, as examples of what we could do, what a goal is to do, using those as a story point, looking at those, going to the property management company, seeing what they, how they set their prices, and then deciding where to go from there as a city, that's one way I could see you doing it.
And then, you know, the housing cost is, it's more expensive to live on the west coast than it is on the east coast.
True, but as potentially Leslie will see, once I talk to her, or she comes and talks to you guys, you'll see that side of the housing market, like I said, if I was looking specifically at rental complexes as a person moving into Boardman and seeing what they see, so this is what people outside of Boardman, looking to move into Boardman, are seeing.
They're just expensive to live here.
Yeah, even though we're not that big of a town, and typically smaller towns mean cheaper prices.
Those don't work anymore, I, yes.
I, I guess I would like to interject the fact that maybe ten years ago, we, the city was very concerned that there was nothing but low-income housing available, and if you didn't fit in the low-income bracket of you had no place to live, and you agree with that.
Yeah.
You see that all of the places we have, besides the ones you're speaking about, are income-based. So, to give an option to people that wanted to live in Boardman, we have had other, other developers come and develop properties. If they apparently feel that they could charge this rent, and like you're saying, they're not going to be eligible unless we would make something that says less than fifteen years, that, that, we couldn't change what the state says, the state this year is like fourteen point nine, that you can raise your rent. But I think that, I think that you have to look at a, the entire community, that if you're, you have to decide if you only have housing for low income and nothing else, and we are building other apartment complexes and other duplexes and things like that, so there are options, maybe more than you had when you first came. But I think that there's a reason that you, that we as a city allow different housing segments for whatever, whatever type of population would like to live.
Anybody else have any comments, Mr. Mayor, Tori, would like to speak, oh, hi, Tori.
Hi, guys, thank you for allowing me, I just want to kind of give an insight on the other side of this, is that when it comes to this supply and demand, we're in a supply and demand moment, moment right now, where this is driving our rental, um, cost up, and we are working on trying to provide diversity in our types of homes, which would allow to level out the high home value that we're having, we don't have a whole lot of lower, um, affordable housing currently, we have subsidized housing, housing, and we have middle and upper-level housing, we don't have, um, affordable housing right now, which is also deemed workforce development, um, housing, so and right now, the state's coming out with some, um, plans on workforce housing levels, where we can lower those costs in those housing programs, and we are just kind of behind on the eight ball, where the city of Boardman, um, and the Portimoro grew our employment pool, our employment opportunity is so high, but we didn't ever keep up with our housing at the same time, so we're trying to, um, mitigate that by bringing in different types of, uh, city developments that are offering different types of housing as well, and I think once we get caught up, you'll, you'll see a difference in these, um, rental, um, prices, because people were going to be able to either move out or we have enough, uh, demand or availability to meet our demand, and so I think we're just kind of in a unique moment right now, where, um, it's kind of driven by people who are already here and developed, and trying to play catch-up with us, who are trying to come in with developments to uh, level out the playing field in this housing, um, crisis that we're in, and it's not just locally, it's across the US, so and a lot of things are happening at the state level and the federal level to offset this, to bring in funding for that, so I just, I, I see both sides of it, and as my job of doing economic development for the city of Boardman, and bringing in housing and working with the Portimoro, and I just feel that this is, and I think there's a lot of thing, moving parts in this, but I did review his, uh, rental, um, uh, analysis that he did, and that was a very detailed information with full of great information that I've been able to share with some developers recently, um, to kind of show how we need to, um, kind of level this out a little bit more.
So we could potentially follow LA and New York's, uh, go of it for, I just call it rent stabilization, uh, instead of rent control or rent protection, so that the semantics of the words don't throw any red flags to any of our businesses in town.
Um, Mr. Mayor, do you have one more comment? Um, I think the way that I was thinking of it is, um, as a city council, um, we oftentimes will decide sometimes whether we're going to allow low-income housing to come in, or we're going to allow certain, um, development to happen, and I think that that then does put us in that position to have some responsibility, um, versus like, yes. Um, so, you know, just thinking of examples of, you know, we had a structure that was problematic. Um, so, you know, just thinking of examples of, you know, we had a structure that was problematic and law enforcement came to us and said. We ought to do something about this. Again, it's a business, but we may have to intervene. And so I think um. Think it might be worth our while just to get more information.
Anybody else have any comments?
The only comment I had is going back to where you mentioned about putting it into the. The building code, whereas when we bring these businesses in, we say. This is our building code and we would like for the rent to start at a certain level. You don't have to put the level, just whatever the index is, but you can only raise it a certain percentage. Every year up to however many years. And that way that would help to stabilize it, but that way the builders would know going into it that, you know, we are looking out for our community. When they've done that, Oregon State has done that in regard to our property taxes, for example. I mean, look at our, I bought my house back in two thousand and seven and what I paid for it then is not what it's worth now. And if my house was, if I was paying the property taxes on what my house is worth right now versus the maximum of the three percent every year that it was increased. I'd be paying a lot of money. So and I kind of, I, that's kind of both directions.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor, I think it would be important to understand that the state of Oregon is trying to address this by Senate Bill. And there are methods in place for people who feel that they are being taken advantage of to. File complaint and try to remedy that issue rather than the city of Boardman create a whole new statute. I think we should defer to the state statute.
Could we make a timeline to after something like that, that was a six oh eight passes that the city could return? And, you know, we could maybe just as a council read on it and see if there's.
Six oh eight did pass.
Yeah.
Passed in twenty nineteen.
Sorry.
It it did pass in twenty nineteen.
Yes. I apologize, that was a reference. So is there a bill named to what you just referenced that we could keep an eye out for?
Senate Bill six oh eight.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bus.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Financial report. Martha.
I think it was at your place then. Um, I don't have a lot of um extraordinary activity in January. Um, I just want to point out that as you can see in our expenditures, our largest expenditure is in our capital project fund. Um, which is our Jua Bos projects. Um, and just in the month of January, we have paid over half a million dollars for that. So um we're making good strides, um nothing that is causing any major time delays. Um, even though we get, you know, every now and then a little bit delayed because of supply issues, but um. Nothing big really, so I'm not going with it. We continue that way for the remainder of our projects. And uh our interest rates are coming up. You can see that they're um. Almost at three point five percent, which we hadn't seen that in a couple of years, so that is good.
Well, it's good for some, not so good for others.
Right, then when you're the trying to get a loan or a house, it kind of don't work so well for you. But when you've got money in the bank, perhaps you get some interest off of it.
Hey, Jackie, I I noticed that I didn't say earlier, but rent problems online, I'm sure you caught that.
Yes, I did, thank you.
Eagle eye over there.
Yeah.
Oh, Junior's on there.
Or maybe that story.
I think that story.
Any questions for the financial report? Moving on, we have a public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to have some public comment? Nobody with public comment? We'll move right on to our action items. Chris three I G A amendment modifying city area of influence. Mr. Chris Delgo. I can look you that up.
Yeah, it's in the packet under other business.
Okay, uh attached uh to your packet is the intergovernmental agreement for the boundary expansions of enterprise zone. Uh, three, Columbia River Enterprise Zone three, the credit board map. Uh, few moves to go, or will be longer, and agreed, all three of these agreed to. Uh, entertain uh request to expand the circles of influence for the city of Boardman. Which outright at this point does not encompass the uh property either out by the city, the city's property out by Love's. Nor does it incorporate the airport properties on credit board. Uh before you use a request uh. Along with a map, I think that uh shows expansion, you can see on your map. Amendment number one. Um listed on the map, it's got yellow hash marks in the red. That shows you, and and I I don't have it online to show, so I can show you on the map if you need. Is there anybody you want to find out?
What tab is it under?
Other business.
Oh, there you have it.
I had asked anything.
Yeah, I remember seeing it online when I was looking through the packet.
And so what this would do is is uh uh putting the city of Boardman to the negotiation table, turning business that may potentially relocate out there. And uh have a say whether they, one, they get to relocate out there. That's something that the city of Boardman agrees with. Um, and so uh I think it's important that you consider uh accepting that uh amendment. And recommend that you. Consider passing.
I remember the discussion. Oh. At the beginning of my tenure when. This wasn't included in the Chris three and uh. This is a really, a really good thing to be able to have our zone of influence in an area. This part of the city of Boardman. That's a really good thing.
So uh uh two of the Chris board members are here tonight, so if they want to have any other discussion. Uh, Mayor Karen. Were you at that? Well, you're an assistant patron, so um it's either one of you want to add anything to those?
Well, I personally think it's just important that since we own the property out there that we are included. Maybe our, maybe right now expansion would not go on our property. But having some decision in that and is always good for us.
It 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 is, there um. You know, there there's a lot of opportunity out there for, you know, uh for the business to come in to be out there. And to be a partner in our community and to be able to have this Chris. I guess the the Chris fund to be able to uh distribute countywide. Is uh is an advantage to our county and being able to do that. You know, I I mean, just look around at the. Just go down bombing range and you can see two things going on there. You go down even farther. You get to uh two oh seven quarter of two oh seven, you see the the windmills and you see. The uh solar panel array and the the things that are coming in that are bringing money into our county. It may not necessarily be to the city of Boardman, but that's coming into our county, which is. Allowing uh Marrow County to be a very successful county that is able to pay higher wages jobs. You know, I I've said this before, uh if we didn't have the businesses that were in our county, Marrow County would not be setting the standard. For their school district on what we offer, what we pay, what we do, what our contracts are. We wouldn't have that if we didn't have some of these businesses. There's negatives out there, but man, if we didn't have these businesses coming in and providing this money to our county. Uh, somebody else would be getting it and be able to reap the benefits of this.
So. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I I I would just tell you, and I don't have the exact number, um it's like one point one million. That Chris was able to give back to the education foundation, which went to Morel County and Land School District. So one point one million went to Morel County School District. That's a, that's a long one.
That's on top of what they get from the state, right?
Yeah.
So a lot of positives. I think the positives outweigh the negatives, that's my opinion. So, yes.
Uh, I move to approve amendment number two of the intergovernmental agreement for the Columbia River Enterprise Zone three within a city area of influence.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Does anybody wish to uh have discussion? We'll do roll call since Brenda is online.
Sure. Counselor Prophet?
Yes.
Counselor Draco's not here. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Cuevas?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Group?
Yes.
Mayor Keever?
Yes. All right, so. That will, that passes. We'll go on to our next one, which is city manager recruitment. We uh we have some choices that we need to discuss. And I wrote down three of them. So our first candidate took another job, so that's gone. That option's gone. Our other option is we have two other candidates that were in the pool of three. We have another option, which we could continue the search. We could continue to doing that. Or other option is uh we could hold off and wait for a little bit, wait for the candidate pool to just to cool off. And uh go back on that in a little bit. So those are some of our options that we need to decide on what we want to go as far as the direction of our city manager recruitment. And if you have another option that I didn't list, you can all share that as well.
Well, I personally feel comfortable waiting too long without trying to relook. I feel the community is really looking at us right now to make a. A smart decision, but. Um, a decision. And I feel like if we were to wait, it would look like we didn't take it as seriously as we do. So I would consider, you know, um out of all the four options I heard. Um, you know, we should either decide on if we want to continue with the recruiting company or do it ourselves. I feel like those are really, in my opinion, the two options that are probably the smartest for us to look at.
I had a fellow come up to me and says, why doesn't the mayor just be the city manager? And I said, no, I don't think that would be it. That would be managing adults. I'll manage students.
Um, I I also um. Um, when I think about positions and hiring, um there are certain uh careers where there are cycles where it's better to. As far as hiring, and I understand that pulling off time, but um in this one, I don't think that that's the case. I I really think it's just a matter of who happens to see it and if it's just the right time in their life to apply. And so um. Um, we, you know, we are um. Investing a lot of time um because we want to have a quality candidate. Um, and be able to offer that to the citizens of Portland, so I would rather we not wait.
I would rather that we not wait, that we continue um searching for a city manager. And we can bring more applicants in and.
Brenda, what's your thoughts?
Sorry, um. So my thoughts on it are to not wait either. I've um, I feel like we should pursue it.
Thank you, Brendan. So that would bring me to my next question would be. Uh, as far as the hiring firm we have, or do we? Like uh someone previously said, do it, go a different avenue?
Mayor, if you'd permit me, I'll go first. I would. Okay, I'd like to go back to SGR. Um, I currently do a lot of hiring. Through Indeed and Career Builder and those other search engines and it's nice to have somebody else taking the. Uh, doing the legwork. For us.
Yes.
What's going to be our requirement this next time then? You know, we. I'm just sorry to say this, but you know, a year ago, we had somebody in the community that was willing to take the job. Then we had people in the community through the Facebook. Then decided that, you know, your integrity and your ethics was challenged. And then you had no support in the city council. So here we are. So now. If we're going back to SGR, I think we need to lay out. What our expectations from them are, because is it going to be twelve candidates? Take them down to four, take them down to three? You've been, you've been through the rodeo of us now. Okay. So now you know more than you knew six months ago. So now it's time that if we're going to go back out again. Because it's, you know, it's the winter, so maybe it would be a good time to go out. I don't know those things. You know, and people want to move their kids, you know, in May or June. But. You're gonna have to have. Here's my biggest concern, I'm just gonna say it to you. Anybody can look on Facebook or anybody can look on our website and read our minutes. And go back and look at the videos. And so I think you have to think about. How do you look at them? How do you look? If I wanted to come here and work. Because when we went through this process, the people that we liked best. Left right off the bat. I mean. They probably did a little research and says, holy cow. So this time. We asked the community to put a lot of time and effort in this too this time. I mean, you know, we've had like thirty different people at different times, I mean, it would probably be counted, it would be at least fifty. That were really invested in this for us. So. When we go back out again, you're gonna have to act like that you're. That that it's as, that's as important to the city council itself as it is to the city to get a new city manager on board. Because. You know. It it it's it's the. The look in the community, I think, is my biggest worry, is that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just because I know our buttons don't work. I think what we do right now on the last few times we've been here is what makes the difference in how it looks to the community. I think we've given a lot of time. I think both of these city manager searches were similar but different, different companies. I think the first one, um, we still did a well and a really good job of presenting those candidates to the company. I mean, to the city. And I think this one was, I don't want to say even more, but of a well done, but it was it was more elaborate. There was more to the pieces. And I think with. All the vocalization that the communities get about either their frustration on not who they thought they should get. Or the frustration on how long it's taking. I think we are doing the best that we can to show them that we are taken seriously. I don't think we need to go out and act like this is something that means a lot to us, because I know how much hours we've all put into this. It's something that does mean a lot to us. And I think at a time when. And I think at a time when the person that we thought we were gonna get was being considered and that didn't go the way we thought it was going to, I can say, as someone that was a part of that council, it wasn't that, it wasn't council backing. And that's neither here nor there, but I think it's an important note to confront, because um, what the council minus how different voices were saying it, what the council wanted was just to make sure the city knew that we were doing this process in a manner that upheld integrity of everybody. And that's what we're doing right now. And I think it is a taxation on our time more than we thought it was going to be. But I think how hard we're working on this is gonna show the city that we will get them what they deserve and they will get out of their council what they need.
So let's get a plan.
So I think that we should start talking with SGR. As me personally, I don't know if it's something that'd be in motion in this moment. But we've already gone so far with this company that I think that we should finish this. They already know the wants of what we have said. And if that doesn't continue, then we shouldn't continue, and we should try to put that burden upon ourselves, as much of a burden it's gonna be.
And from what I understood um from the company was that um it's really up to us as far as how we want to proceed. Whether we want twelve candidates, five candidates, you know, three, if we want to take a more surgical approach, um I think one of the things that we talked about was um perhaps just organizing even the interviews a little bit different, so that people aren't having to take off two whole days, um just things like that. And so I think that there's some flexibility for us to say this is how we want it. If we were to proceed with a um.
But I think you have to do it now.
I.
I mean, I mean, what I'm saying is, you can't say, I know what I'm supposed to do, but I I don't want to think about it today. I want to wait until next meeting. You know, I think SGR is getting nervous. I mean, they'd like to know what we're gonna do. And like you said, we we've learned from some of the things too, that uh.
We already know how much it's gonna cost. We know what the cost investment will be. So I guess what I'm getting from the council is that we continue our search. That we probably start the same way we did before. Get the group? Get the candidates? Yes?
So um we have several positions that need to be filled. The longer this draws out, the harder it's gonna be to get that.
That is correct.
I have an option to potentially bring somebody on as an assistant city manager who uh is a manager in uh different areas that uh potentially could be a very good fit for the city board um and the community. Uh have you considered uh the possibility of let me bring that person on and train them over several months to get them a position and then move forward with a a hiring process to give them an opportunity to go through the position.
To clarify, because I got a little bit lost. So you're saying to hire hire them as assistants, so then be trained to be the city manager?
To train them so that they can apply for the position, for the city manager position. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, but and is that.
How long would that encompass? How, what what do you, what timeline are you looking at for hiring assistant city manager and training them?
This person would not be able to come until uh probably August. And then um they would need some time to transition through that process, so. I don't have an exact answer other than uh we are running the city day to day. We are getting things done. You might find that uh this person will be exactly what you're looking for. So it might be a worthy investment to take the time to do that. I will tell you that you've spent in excess of fifty thousand dollars so far looking for the city manager. Um, we've got uh other positions, and I think Mark could probably talk about this a little bit, uh salaries and and presented a a paper, but uh, you know, if we were to fill those positions, uh maybe this year we're one point one million.
Those are the positions that we have opened and we have not filled, um that we budgeted for, because we do anticipate filling them. Um, so of our finances here, where you have maybe actual true numbers, how do you fill these positions from the beginning of the year? Know that for the year it would be one point one million more.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Brenda.
So um, I I want to clarify a couple of points, um as my memory uh serves. One is when a year and maybe six months ago, when this process started, it was not for a city manager, but rather for an assistant city manager, which was inside the purview of the city manager's job to hire. But for the city manager, the city council was to hire, and one of the biggest problems with that process was there was a lot of talk out in the community that it was really someone to replace the city manager and that the city manager was hiring that person. Now, this is the talk. And I want to caution us to think about the way this looks to uh the regular citizen when the city council doesn't do that process.
Well, let me answer uh give my input on this, Brenda, as far as we kind of maybe learned from our mistake last time, if you want to even call it a mistake. Uh, I think the process is to hire a city manager, to train within, to be able to then have a process, a hiring process, very similar to what we did with the three or four members who might want to be the city council or city manager. I think that's what's a little bit different on this one, would be that we would have this person be trained and then go through the interview process, then to have a whole lot of input on whether or not which of the three or four candidates that we have would then be. It just allows that person the opportunity to be automatically injected into that, if I, is the way I'm kind of thinking, it would be. It would not be like, oh, city manager, you're trained, and guess what? We're gonna choose that person. I don't think we're gonna go that route again. At least, that's not the way I was envisioning that.
Um, the description that I just heard was the current city manager would hire an assistant city manager, train them up after they were available in August, and then after they've had a sufficient amount of training, they could potentially be the city manager. Okay, I'm I'm sorry if I missed a detail, but I just want to caution us that that is the very thing that started the big turmoil the last time.
It actually isn't. I just respectfully disagree with you on that one. It's not the same process. We, I think the process is a little bit different, and I I wouldn't say a little bit different. I think it's a lot of a difference. So I guess we'll just have to respectfully disagree, and I appreciate your caution. So that was my fourth option, that I was kind of thinking that was out there as far as what we can do. But we have those ideas. Now, we know that the hiring of the assistant city manager is not our privilege. It's not our privilege. So uh, what we do have privilege on is the hiring process. And that is what we have control of, and we get to have input on how that hiring process is. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I ask a question, uh city manager?
Sure.
Is um negotiations with the hiring company, is it a special session or an executive session? That we would need to have?
I guess I need more detail.
Yeah, as far as what.
Like what their fees or?
Yes, I I guess working out, um, you were provided with the fee. I know, but if we were to work out um a more surgical approach with that company um to give them a your options are. Okay, so if you're discussing options, they have to be done in a public setting. If you are offering a position to a specific individual, then you can go into an executive session. If we were talking about, and this is, I'm just need to bring my my knowledge, if we were talking about employment um prospects of the city, is that special session or is that executive? Employment prospects as in? What decision we should make on this topic? That decision has to be made. If if you have, for example, if you were gonna offer a position to one of the other two candidates, then we have an exemption under or under or as for executive session. And talk about your options, the wage, everything has to be done, et cetera. Alright, so what if I can ask one more question? So we need to make a decision right now, or decide not to? And what we're looking at is either A, saying yes, please, because the city manager, uh excuse me, the assistant city manager isn't in our career, so is are you just letting us know that you have a cough deck for that, and you would you would like to bring that forward? Uh to consider for, under your employment, or are we also saying that we do need to decide if we are going forward with the recruiting?
Or if we're going to wait and see if this assistant city manager would be a good fit?
Those would be some options, yes. It it, for what it's worth, if we didn't have somebody that can do the job right now, I would say, yes, you need to be doing something. But we're doing the job. We are getting the job done. We have a good crew. We've got a bunch of people that are stepping up to the plate, taking on extra assignments. Uh, we can get this done. Don't hire somebody just to hire somebody. Make sure we get a good fit for the city and our community. I I can't emphasize that enough. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're fine. You're fine. You're good.
And in in the spirit of that last sentence, I I think right now we should still focus on the hiring company. I I still stand by what I said that I think it's important on how we move with promptness right here, but I do hear positive things outside of that. I just think that I have to kind of keep focused on what this is to make sure we're taking steps forward visually for the for the community. So I think the decision before you tonight is, uh you have to decide if you're gonna offer the position to one of the other two candidates. That's probably a decision to make fairly soon, so that they can let one of the other two candidates know, and if so, we need to start the conditional offer and and contract negotiation.
Well, I think that that was pretty.
You guys had to make that decision.
That was pretty made clear on where our direction was to go with the two other coun- the candidates. I think that direction by our community, we pretty.
Mr. Mayor?
We had, who is the council have not made. Well, I know that 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 was my input to direct into.
I I I was with you on that as well. I was gonna say, for formality, like, I would be willing to make a motion to let the you know, direct them to the city, so that the um other two candidates know that we would not be interested in pursuing a with a contract with them. And for us to uh set a time that we did sit um or have the city work out the details with the recruiting company for us to um begin moving forward again.
So you got two things in that?
I can make one motion at a time, sorry.
Let's just do.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that we need it. I can sense this would probably. Appropriate. Um, if I can get a consensus on whether or not to offer the other two candidates a position, that would be what I would like from the council.
I think the consensus is that we're not.
We don't want to say that.
Okay, so my next option is up to you guys to decide.
Do we need a cons- do you need a consensus, or do you need a motion?
I don't know that we need a motion, uh but we need some direction on how we're gonna proceed.
Now you're up.
Um, my my consensus is, I would like to continue working with the recruiting company SGR, and um I believe the council should find a number for us to set as our cap for candidates.
I think we've said the number. I think we've gave one fifty.
I saw how many candidates, because we have the.
Oh, you want number of candidates?
I think if we can decide as much as we can right now, it'd be really beneficial for us.
So we're looking for SGR to continue to recruit candidates? And you want nine? Come up with nine?
With three finalists or five?
So maybe, maybe rather than define the parameters, if you want to do, if you, let's just say you you decide you want to go with SGR. I can get Mark to come back. You guys can uh in a public forum, set some criteria, like a timetable, uh candidates, so on and so forth. How about we do that? It it is it the desire of the council to have SGR come back to the table and present the next council?
I think, I think that would be the desire of the next count. I think desire of the council.
Are we able to do it sooner? Could we do two weeks?
Couldn't we give directive to SGR to start the process as they described it they could do for us before? Maybe I didn't say that very well. Um, what I was thinking is, can't we ask Rick, the uh city manager, to contact Mark at SGR and start the process for the recruitment, since we don't have to go through a lot of the items that we went through before, because most of that is still germane to our search. And then all he has to do is open it back up and start that process again.
I think, yeah, I think that's the kind of the direction we're trying to get at, Brenda. Thank you for that clarification. Trying to get but maybe we just need to, is that what you're looking for, is direction in that?
I'm just wondering why we'd need another meeting for that. Couldn't we just give that direction tonight?
I was hoping that we could do that.
Okay, well, that would be my, if we get to vote on it, that's my vote.
So my question would be, you you're talking about limiting the amount of candidates and so on and so forth.
Can we just go with the same, the same design that we did the last time? I would like, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think then we would have that executive session where we would be able to see the candidates. We, I think we got the information prior to that as well, and then then we can decide, we just want these six or these, you know, nine. Um, I think that's when we need to get into those details.
You can, you can do that in the executive session. I just heard it's not limited to twelve candidates. I, if we're gonna get into those particulars, we we need to have a discussion.
Well, I think we need to keep it on the west coast. Well, and and. I don't think we need to have these people from east coast coming over here, because it's a really long trip. And for what we're offering, we just had one candidate tell us, if I'm coming from the east coast, I'm not coming to Oregon for this amount of money. Thank you very much for taking all our time.
Maybe that means we've learned on how we should do the candidates different as well.
Yes, I think we need to take a look at how we find candidates, what we're candidates, what our desire is for our candidates, and.
But I, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think those discussions need to happen at SGR.
Yes, and I I don't think, I don't think the council is disagreeing with that.
So that's. No, we said only, but.
If if I might, I think that we already did that four months ago. We brought in an entire group of people from the community. We brought in an entire group of people from the community to tell what we wanted in a city manager. We each met with Mark, we've been down that path. The only, the next step for him, to my way of thinking, is to open up the job again and start finding additional candidates.
Yes, I think that's what we're trying to do.
But I think we're also trying to limit the search for where those candidates are coming from. And that's a discussion we need to have with S G R to modify the search.
Well, one of the suggestions that Mark gave us last time was to modify the length of time that the search occurs, and. I'm not opposed to somebody from outside of the west coast or the inland northwest, or even this half of the United States. I would be open to anything, anybody who's qualified, who would be willing, but um. That's just my personal opinion on it. Um I but I would like to see us go forward tonight with a plan that's not being put off until April to get started.
Correct, that's what we're trying to get hammered out right now. So do we just want, what, I guess we're just trying to get some direction to to Soko.
Well, I have this uh consensus to have Rick contact S G R and bring more candidates, that's what I know so far.
That sounds perfect to me.
And I believe, because you've already said how you're going to do the hiring, you do not have to redo that public meeting. To get public input again, we've already got that. You just need to schedule executive sessions with your S G R people and work all this out.
Into clearing confusion, I'm willing to rescind my my nine, I just thought that was an expectation that we had. So I apologize.
But I guess I'm looking at was is trying to get uh S G R to do, get going with their search. Doesn't mean that you can't do what you wanna do.
I'm I, so.
But I don't think, yeah.
If if. There's no sense wasting somebody else's time, just saying.
At this time, it would not be, probably, if the councils wanted to do another search. It would probably not be in that person's best interest. To come on and be a city manager at this time. Unless no candidate was found in the next search.
It could also apply for the pool as well.
I will not be hiring an assistant city manager. If we're gonna continue that search, because I really feel that that position should be hired by the new city manager.
That would make sense to me.
And 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 so that's why I don't wanna go through that process, um because that really needs to be done by.
That the city manager, yes.
Um and 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 for me to hire that person, have them come in and train, and then have you guys decide now that's not gonna work. This person given up another position, another job, where they have a stable position. And and they're gonna move here, I, that's that's a tough ask, to do it, to be straight.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I feel like. To honor what we've heard in the community, if if we went the route that that you did. I think it would be wise for us to still open up a pool ourselves, I, it just.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting you do otherwise.
Right.
What I'm saying though is, this person isn't gonna, why would they come and take a position, they already have a position? And 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 go through this to 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 have you say, eh, we don't want the person to apply.
I understand, but. I feel like I look fickle if I change. From what we've done and with the company that we've done. To all of a sudden going through something like this, I'm comfortable with it, if we didn't, if we don't violate anything. But I feel like professionally, for someone to sit there and to view me. It looks fickle to me to change the entire scope of how we're looking for this. On a hope that it's a good match. And I feel like it's a good stock for me to invest in in this hiring company. Uh when I've gone this long, and I don't know what it will yield, and and I'm holding it's not for nothing again. But it's also a rock and a hard place of how I'm trying to view what my decision should be as well. And and I hope I do not look, you know, um dismissive to the idea that you're bringing up to the table, because I'm not.
Well, I think that, I think we got, we're at a spot where. We have a fellow who wants to come in, who would be willing to come in, to become assistant city manager, get trained. To work side by side with the city manager. And hold up on the on the interview, uh on the hiring process, and then when this person feels like. Or the group decides that, hey, we need to open it up, we open it up, then we go through the hiring process. That's option number one, option number two is to say, sorry dude, you're gone, we're gonna go. Through the hiring process, and we just lost another person that was willing to come in to do this for us. That would be number two, that we just let go, somebody said that we're willing to come in and do that. So, uh if we wanna be the group that says, hey, we're gonna let. A second person who says, I'll come in and do it for this dollar that you're giving me, and I'm gonna live here and I'm gonna do this, and I'm invested in the community. Then we let that go, or we say, no, we're not gonna do that, that's strike number two, we're gonna go through S G R. We're gonna take our gambles with them, uh that's, I think, where we're at.
I would like to just comment, Mister Mayor, that I. Were being asked to make a decision based on a person that we have no knowledge about.
That's absolutely correct.
And I think that that's hard for me, um to say one way or another. Um and and, you know, um gee, so go, um. No offense, but you know, it would just be relying on you, right, to say like, this this person I feel like would be good. And I, um and I think that just makes it difficult for for me to say that. Um cause I don't know if that person is gonna work out, right? Um and to me, I think. One of the things that I've learned about in this hiring process and where we live. Um which I think is true for a lot of the professions in this area, is that we end up having to grow our own, right? And. I feel like when I'm looking at, we're gonna reopen this up and look for candidates. I was gonna be looking for those that have the most experience. I mean, I'll be looking for ones that are going to be working with, you know, Karen or Rick and. Be able to train and grow, and so to me, I feel like, let's open it up and. Have that person apply, because I will be looking for some of those individuals versus the ones that have that veteran experience.
And that's kind of where I'm at too, versus this person, if they are a great candidate for this community. Which I'm confident in what you say is correct, that. Bring them through the hiring process for a city manager, hire them as the city manager, and get them trained, and. Go from there. The only thing I'm concerned about is you said that this person, if he was offered this position, or she. Wouldn't be able to come here until August, so that's still. Isn't helpful, but then you, there's that flip side where you hire them as the assistant city manager, and they apply for the pool. And then, or don't apply for it, decide to be the assistant city manager, and then we still have to go back up city manager, so. I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios, it's it's a very, very difficult decision.
So so my consensus, sorry, moving on, my consensus was that we continue to work with this.
Alright, I think I think we're gonna continue with S G R.
But this person that you have in mind, I would, I would like to see them apply.
No, I I kinda, maybe before we go, um Karen, you didn't weigh in. Maybe you did, maybe you didn't.
Well.
I just think that. Yeah, I think this is a a big decision and. We're at a critical standstill, and. Uh I think we would, I think we're better served having somebody that knows more than. Would be willing to live here, I think, I think you can. I think we can train people to learn the rules and those kind of things, I think that. My advantage was when I came on, that I had very, I had a good, I had a good staff in place, you know, to. Cause planning is the hardest part of learning this job, I think, that because that was my weakest part. So, but, you know, I think people that manage people. Uh and manage the community, I mean, that's what you're looking for, you are look, this. We can sit here all night and think about an education, but I'm gonna tell you, it's personality grade. If you don't fit in the community, I don't care how smart you are, and how many degrees you have. You just, we, you just see it all the time. And and I, so I'm really inclined to have somebody that is committed to Oregon. And if we, if this person will, if we give them an opportunity to apply. In the general thing, and we are open and honest about what we really are looking for. That, you know, they should hold up who they said.
And you kind of get it on the head, as I, I think we're kind of be dishorse to to death, but I I think that. We're at the place where we need to continue with the hiring process. We need to highly encourage the fellow uh that I see up there to make sure that he is included in the. The process, and then be able to have the interviews. Be able, and the interview process to determine whether or not that is the right person for this area. We're just at the time, we're, August is four months away.
But I think that the community, I'm sorry, um I think that the community is pushing for us also to continue with this process. But I think as long as we choose someone, and we're willing to wait for that person to come here, as long as we, we are still moving in that direction. I think that's important to know.
Yeah, I don't think people are unreasonable about, you know, our community, I I don't, I don't make her be competitive there.
Cause I think they have faith of our city uh government and our city offices and our staff, that they're doing their job. They're not letting the city falter. And I don't, I don't see that, I'm not feeling that, I'm not hearing that, and so, uh. Yeah, let's, I say that, the direction.
So before we move off this, probably this been now long discussion, I need to make sure. The finance, do we need to have something to authorize the? Ten thousand plus expenditure for the rest of the recruitment?
Uh no, I still have room in the budget, so we're okay, and um we will be needing to have a supplemental budget here um shortly, so. We're gonna make any minor modifications, um I'll include it then, but we're still good with what I have in the budget.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's your, that required also. You have all the information you need.
Yes, I do.
Okay. In our packet, we got the Council Drago's resolution resignation, so uh. Due to Council Drago's new appointment as a uh family uh commissioner. He has given his resignation, so uh I have accepted his resignation. And we need to open that, but I guess I'll direct you to open that.
So if I might, uh 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 Mister Drago was unable to attend tonight, he had a plan on it, uh his new position required. Uh since he was appointed to another uh position of that. Uh he had to attend a meeting and have everything, so he sends his apology, his apologies for not being here. Um but uh his new job is keeping him busy.
Okay, congratulations.
Yeah, so I I I think at some point, he'll try to make sure he's here for that.
He'll be here when he gets his. So that's right, we'll do another day that he can be here and give.
So uh uh you're accurate, Mister Mayor, we need to uh define um. Uh how you like staff personnel, you want us to open it up as we have in the past, let it have interest. Only the vacancy, and then schedule them to come in and uh speak for you.
I think that would be a good direction to go.
Okay.
So what is, I'd say we should be able to make, have have presentations at our next. Council meeting that we'll end up talking about data later. I will say that uh Mister Drago's uh twenty point font was not. Was I can read it without my glasses, so, and I know this computer does type out a different one. So I do not pay the fence, I would go on record for saying that, so. Alright, so that takes care of that, we'll go on to Mister Soko, you have a congressional direct spending incubator building.
Yes, so uh. Congressional direction spending, we have two weeks and we have to apply for that funding through. Um the uh B C D A has been, they purchased the property uh uh over by the ads. Building to build that annex or a incubator incubator building. Um here, we did this about a year ago, uh and they received uh C D S funds to help build that facility. And so uh they uh B C D A asked if the city of Oregon would apply for those dollars. In the effort to help them build the city incubator building. Uh so we have applied for those dollars, if we are successful in receiving these dollars, and. I would be coming back, uh we'll have to do a resolution accepting those funds uh so that we can continue. So we're keeping our fingers crossed, looking with the building against the funding to help build an incubator building, bringing home businesses to Oregon.
Alright.
Along, along, well, I I can do that my report later, so.
Okay, so we'll go to our next part, in your packet, you saw that we have uh vacancies for. Uh budget committee members, we have two individuals who apply, and we have two positions open. So I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor Abu, the mayor of Wayne, Dorian Roco, and Stephen Bust, and the vacancies on the Boardman Budget Committee. And the Boardman Urban renewal agency budget committee for a term each ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three, please.
I have a motion and uh I'm looking for a second. Okay, is there any discussion you'd like to have about this? So we'll do a roll call.
Alright, Council Prophet.
Yes.
Council Williams.
Yes.
Council Bone Gardner.
Yes.
Council Quipus.
Yes.
Council Pitter.
Yes.
Mayor Eager.
Yes, so welcome aboard, congratulations, that's good job. Did you have a comment or did you?
I just wanted to know if your position will expire at the end of this year, um or disappointed, so those will have to be reappointed. In January, so.
Thank you, and your budget committee is starting up here. Very soon.
Yes, our meeting is in May, May sixth.
Not very cool. Alright, so we'll go to the police report.
Uh you should have uh the stats from January, February, the packet, um. Total calls was down just a little bit, um everything's kind of stayed about the same, uh. Kind of last year was very busy comparatively, and it's led over into this year, um. Let over into this year, um, no trainings that we had and I don't, uh, don't have anything to report that's coming out for this last. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to try and.
Any questions? Wow, I'm good, well.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the building department report.
So, uh, that is in the package, actually, can you?
Yeah, we're really slow with the permits, but a lot of the land reviews, one's been doing a lot of land reviews. What that means is whenever we purchase those permits, we'll be selling a lot of permits again, so. But you have to, I don't know if it's the weather or everything's holding off because I can't go running around with it, yeah. We'll get there.
Any comments as far as the? Building department. Public Works Department.
As you can see in your packet, you have a report as usual, those. I think I have anybody from the building department on, so, um.
Well, I did notice that the, the crosswalk, the wooden crosswalks for the new sidewalk thing broke me up yesterday. Yesterday or the day before, I know it was in the last, what's today, Tuesday, it went up yesterday.
On Columbia.
Yeah, it went up in the afternoon, cause in the morning when I came from the rec center over there. Either that or I didn't see it. But I don't think that, I don't think it was there in the morning or. So, but they're there now.
They were not. They were this yesterday, like, oh, five and now eleven.
Were they there in the morning, Mr. Bus?
Yeah, they were there this morning, they were.
No, this morning, maybe yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning, uh, I don't think they were there yesterday morning, but they were there yesterday afternoon. Really appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, that was part of the sidewalk for a project, right, yeah. All right, uh, committee reports, we don't have any committee reports, uh, city manager report. And you're guaranteed to be enough then, uh, Mrs. Pedder.
Uh, I, I sent you just a, a brief, just a real brief statement, what, what I value is. Uh, what happens on a daily basis is just astronomical, um, there's a lot of stuff that happens in the city, so. Um, I am happy to say that we've got these bail agreements, uh, uh, comparable to that we spoke about, um. The easement. For Memorial County, we finally got that accomplished, so we are going to be able to finish the Columbia Avenue sidewalk. The last question, the end of the last handup was the easement for Memorial County, we, we had a meeting with their staff. Went over both sides of it to, to get to the point that they agreed to give us an easement.
That the spot that's knocked down was set to be a gift, or is it part of the down?
It's approved down.
That's what I thought, but one of the big gift that we're gonna have to do something there.
From where the, from where the sidewalk ends by the, the storage units.
Yeah.
All the way to Columbia, that, we, we can start moving forward on that.
Okay.
Part of the project is stalled because, uh, under, where they need to do some of the sidewalk, um, the utilities are too close to the fiber. To, uh, uh, fix those issues, um, and then, uh, you'll see at the core view where the sidewalk is like three foot higher in one section. That'll all be taken out, brought down to grade, so, um. Because we didn't have easement to finish the project, they demoed their construction project, but are starting to come back, so. We are hopeful to have that project done, and it's been a five-year, uh, venture, um, we're just getting closer to having it done. Excited to have it done, to provide a safe for all the people to travel, um, so we're, we're hopeful to get that done. Um, I talked about, uh, um. Congressional directed spending, um, with a request for tomorrow in Memorial County, had, uh, several requests we gave them, and I think you should have probably. Received those letters that you have yet.
Yeah.
Uh, so we got letters for them to also provide some knowledge for projects that they're looking on, uh, we're happy to do that email too, um. I'm tell you that, um, I. I misunderstood, I thought that an email went out to all of you that we have a city county court meeting. Um, which is tomorrow night at five thirty. Um, when I spoke to Brandy today, she told me that she didn't have all of your email addresses, so it did not go out to all of you. That's on me, I didn't realize that when she sent it out, so I do apologize. If you could make it though, we have a city county court meeting at the four at five thirty, uh, for dinner, and then they started meeting at six, so. Uh, I apologize, I should have looked at all people that the emails sent to to make sure you were on there.
Are you able to forward that to us? So that would be my letter.
The email, yes, I will.
I might not be able to make it, I just had, uh. It just turned into just being my job right now, so for the outside, so I might not have someone to carry that if that happened.
I, I can apologize, we'll make sure that you are all included in that email list.
Uh, my wife can accept that, so that I'm at the age and the time in my life where she just like takes her hand. This is what we made plans, so, but I will be there.
Um, I, I will tell you that, uh, we interviewed a person today from, uh, a temp service to try to help fill in for the H R. Um, so we are hiring a temp employee for that position, um, and I think we have a three-month contract. Um, but if that person doesn't work out, then, if that doesn't work out, that'll give us some, some help. And flexibility so that whoever takes a position where they're shot. And did you have any questions about the report? Idol Power, we, we. Uh, we're working, we're in discussions with, uh, uh, Idol Power on the B two H program project. Um, and, uh, we're having attorneys from both sides involved, um. I think they want to purchase the property from the city. Uh, rather than, uh, lease it or on our easement, and we're probably a little uncomfortable about selling them a, a piece of property that's out by the lagoon that's. Might be something that we need in the future. Uh, I think, I think the city would probably be best suited to lease that. But I would probably defer to Karen a little bit, uh, as this is a project that's been going on for quite some time.
First power line can it go to? Is it just gonna run through town or longer power line or?
If you ask me, it's going to Norman to Henry. That's what I.
When you say anyway, what's in the?
The idol down by Noah, it goes, uh.
Well, if they want that land, they're gonna pay a lot.
It is, no, they, they want the easement, they want to purchase the easement.
Oh.
And there's probably no reason.
Not to.
They're worried, they're worried in this board, that's what, that's what we're, we're, because. They should just, they, if they want to pay us a stipend just to lease the thing, then we probably can be okay with that. If they want to purchase that easement, I think we're gonna be a no.
Cause I just remember the last time we dealt with the power.
Oh, yeah, we're not going to do that again.
It's gonna be.
Yeah.
As long as you're on board with that, the.
This is city property and it, it's an easement, we, we, we have nothing to do with the other part, that's just, that's their problem, they're just wanting an easement. I'm uncomfortable selling them an easement, I really recommend that we, uh, do a lease. And if you would agree with that, then if you can authorize me to, uh, continue with negotiations with those, that organization and try to get that, uh, lease.
I think he should sign this, but here's, here's what he wants to say. Is that he needs to sign the agreement. Because they're, they're, all of a sudden, they're on the last track, I mean, you know, it's fifteen years.
Right.
But they think they're really getting down to the. Maybe three years, so.
Actually building on it?
Yes. For start, and if, the, the property we're speaking about is at the corners, uh, or circle fifty-two. There are just a little spot, if I had known, I should have brought you.
There, well, I, I.
And you're gonna see me today.
Yeah.
It, it's just dirt. If, if you see our circle. There's one little spot on one end side of the circle, and then there's another spot over here. I, I can send you all of that.
Are the lines gonna go across the other people's property? Of our citizens? Or are they maybe county residents? Or does that even matter?
That's their problem. I mean, they have to do that.
But I was just thinking, if we did that, would we be starting to repercussions to people who feel like they have to sell or do whatever because of city board? Or am I just making a big thing out of that?
I think that this one goes towards I know Starland, so it. It comes down and, and goes.
So is it just gonna connect in a big lump bigger line? Or make their own?
There's gonna be farmers right over here in Newmanville County that are gonna be against it. You don't wanna say it.
Yeah.
But that's not. Their reason, our easement is, has nothing to do with, with them, because that's what's taking them fifteen years. It's when they got to Baker City, the grouse. Some kind of grouse down there. Nested or something, and then he got down towards Ontario, and then the farmers that farm. Right to the edge of their property, said, no, I'm not gonna give up any of my property.
So our property is the starting point.
Out past our property, I think there's something called Longhorn, would be a substation out there.
Okay.
What the easy part of this is, if they don't have easements to do the whole project, they're not gonna need an easement from us.
All right, no, I can, I, I can send you something. But I think it's just a.
So again, I, I, I would ask that you authorize me to continue in negotiation with them and, uh, if we can come to an agreement, I'll authorize you to sign the agreement.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yes, sir.
It looks like you.
Yes, sir.
I don't. Oh, we're ready to go.
Uh, so they're all there, I, I'm gonna show you a, a timeline for the new one already.
Okay, any, Karen, anything for Brendan, Brendan, what do you, what, what, what's your input as far as consensus of what we were talking about?
There we go, sorry, um, I, I'm in favor of letting Rick negotiate with the B two H. Um, people and make those, just make those discuss, those, uh, have those discussions, it would. Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
All right, thank you, Brenda. So we'll move right along, uh, councilors.
Mr. Karen, if I can finish.
Oh, yeah, sorry, you have to, uh.
So, uh, this is only a minute and twenty-three seconds, this is.
Here, so the people online can see.
Yes, the, the time-lapse video of our waste water and the new project for their twenty-two hundred three, Anderson Perry, the bit of first that works, so. Uh, I thought it would be good for you to know, at least see what we're doing.
And it had better than watching him just pounding.
That's the start of the project, uh, early on, uh, at some point you can still see the two shooting ranges that are where in place that are no longer there.
And look how nice the little boos look in that bowl. That's after they're starting to build the bank, that part of the building, see.
I don't think he said that we're doing most, when he showed us this video, he said that, I believe it was twelve, fifteen.
So that is, uh, what we are, that, that we're doing, uh, it is done.
But so that's what you're, what was that?
That's really cool.
Thank you, Anderson Perry.
They heard that with their salary. Yes, so thank you.
I have nothing from there, uh, other than discussion about city happening, so if you want to put that off, we're later.
We want to do that right before the executive session.
Uh, so I, getting on the executive session, I don't think we have.
Are you only, they're gonna need to do that, okay, thank you, that, okay, so we know it's there, they said, so why don't we, uh, we'll do that after the mayor, after the mayor. So councilors, uh, comments, anybody have some council comments? That they'd like to share, Brendan, you have anything you'd like to share as far as council comments?
No, I, I don't have anything this time, thank you though.
You bet. Uh, the mayor comments, I was just gonna comment on the sidewalk, but we already talked about that with the little flashing thing that, that was super cool. Uh, and I also made mention to the Riverside High School, uh, students here. Probably borders all get out, but you know what, uh, you guys, you got the check mark, you got that off, and who knows, maybe you'll wanna be. Doing this someday and, uh, be involved in your community, it may not have to be up here, but you could get involved in your community in an organization. Or in a community group and to be able to make a difference in your community, and that's what I think is really cool that you're here is that you're, uh. Whether you're here because it's a requirement, you're, uh, learning about your community and, uh, it can, it can be a lot of fun. So, thank you, that's all I had to say. So, the other thing we need to talk about is we're gonna need to change our date on our next city council meeting. Which is what, April fourth? We are unable to have our council meeting on April fourth, so we need to talk about a possible change of date.
Is there a recommendation?
It's open, there is, uh, as, uh, it just can't be that week.
Do you want to go with the eleventh, following you there?
That would be a, a date that we would have open. So on the eleventh, I have a softball game, but I wouldn't be late. So, uh, it doesn't mean that I won't be here, that just means that. The council president will be ready to start the meeting on the eleventh, cause there's no way I'm getting back from Heather for a softball game by seven.
Would you like us to change the date? If, if you're not coming back for seventh, and you'd like us, or you know, you know.
Well, it, it's, it's, we need to have a meeting, and the meeting can happen on the eleventh, and we can happen without the mayor or with the mayor being late, is.
We can do that.
Yeah, I, I, if it works for everybody, I would think that eleven would be a good date to do it, if, if that works.
If that works for everybody, we can send out, um, notification and you put it on your calendar for that. We, we appreciate it.
So let's just plan on the eleventh to be our next city council meeting. And, uh, was there anything else that was good order for that? And we're not having an executive, or executive session, okay, so this meeting is hereby closed.
You can ask me if I have anything, so. I just wanted to be a line shooter, uh, to make sure that it was, uh, into the upper deck, or to the council, which.
I'm sorry, I did not specifically give you that invitation, I have yet to hear and have to have that, this meeting is hereby closed.